Study session of the Pasco School Board of Directors. This afternoon, we will be hearing from district staff about our dual-language program, but not just about how it works and what it is and the overall details of what it is in our schools, but we'll be getting into the nitty-gritty a lot of not of the theory and even some misconceptions around dual-language programs, which I think is really important to discuss when we're talking about language acquisition, especially when we have such a robust program like we do here in Pasco School District. So I'm really excited for this study session as a dual-language teacher, but I am going to go ahead and let Assistant Superintendent Lobos take it from here.
Thank you and good afternoon, Board President Brown, Superintendent Whitney, members of the board, it's my pleasure to be with you this afternoon, and I have the opportunity to take you through some learning about our dual-language program. So today, our purpose is really to provide you an overview of the program, and then I'm going to highlight different concepts and actually do what, you know, really a study session, some learning around different things that impact dual-language programs and the students in those programs. What I'm going to review with you today are these things up here, I'm going to provide with you, we're going to begin with just a general overview of dual-language, Washington state law as it applies to dual-language, our district demographics, by then, we're going to delve into bilingualism in the brain, so that you have some background as to why the research works and why dual-language works and why generally speaking, students in those programs have better academic outcomes. We're also going to explore multilingualism and misconceptions that often people have about second language acquisition or even learning a second language at different stages in life. Can you hear me? Sorry. Then, we're going to talk about skill transfer in dual-language programs of how that works and why we don't teach everything in both languages. Language allocations with regards to Pasco School District, our 80/20 model, and then 50/50 from third grade thereon, and then training and professional development, and then the end will be some questions and answers. So this WAC represents the laws surrounding dual-language and multilingual education in Washington State. So, schools in Washington State are mandated to provide a research-based bilingual program for students who qualify as multilingual learners. OSPI has designated dual-language as that preferred program for districts that serve those students. And again, districts that have enough students to create a program are required to do so. So this is the actual WAC. Some data about the district in terms of language, we have 48 total languages as spoken in the district, home languages, and of the top six of those languages include English, Spanish, Ukrainian, Russian, Karen, and Mom. We often get the question from people, "Well, if there are 48 languages, why don't we have dual-language programs in all of those languages?" And the answer is, because in order to staff a dual-language program, you have to have enough students to at least create a whole classroom, so there needs to be enough in the classroom, and you also have to have teachers that speak those languages to provide those programs. So, really, when you're implementing a program, you need to have enough resources to be able to sustain those programs throughout those grade levels. So for us, in the district, we have dual-language programs in both Spanish and Russian, which are two largest language groups of students. While 38% of students qualify as multilingual learners, many more are simultaneous bilinguals, and I'm going to throw a lot of terminology out you, at you, but I don't want you to worry, because even though I'm talking about it, we're going to talk about what those terms mean here shortly. Many more are simultaneous bilingual students who are already bilingual in English and another language when they enter school. So what is dual-language? Dual-language really refers to any program that provides literacy and content instruction to all students through two languages. And again, for us, that is in Spanish and English, and then in Russian and English. And then, of course, the goals of those programs are by literacy, high academic achievement in both languages, bilingualism, and socio-cultural competence, which are the three pillars of dual-language. So, back to the Washington Administrative Code, or the WAC, the reason that the state of Washington, through OSPI, encourages and in some instances requires dual-language programs, is because the research and the data shows that it is the most effective program model for students. This chart depicts the long-term outcomes of dual-language programs with two-way programs at the very top, you can see that there in the blue line, two-way programs, and then shortly after that, one-way programs, as the most effective program models. This chart also to note, if you look at where they begin in first grade, they're, the blue line is the 50th percentile, you can see that it really is about the long-term effects, not the short-term effects of dual-language program, because we know that students are still acquiring language, and it takes up to seven years for them to fully acquire One of the things to celebrate is that this is the first year that we are offering large-scale dual-language programs in all of our middle schools, as we transitioned our largest cohort of students to sixth grade this year. There are currently 2,978 students served in our two-way programs, and a total of 4,613 in one-way and two-way combined. Now, we're going to shift a little bit, and this is the learning part, where we're going to talk about bilingualism and the brain. So we're going to begin with some of the misconceptions of second language acquisitions that the research has dispelled, some of these myths. So often, and this is one of the reasons even years ago, families really, you know, they, a lot of them were cautious about having their kids enter into dual-language programs, because they believed that second language could cause confusion, so the kids are going to get confused when they're exposed to another language, or that students can't be fluent without starting at a very young age or birth, for, so for our two-way students who enter in kindergarten, they thought, "How could this be if they already have another dominant language?" Or a second language might create delays in academic learning, there's actually a lot of research out there, even for students with disabilities, that says even if, when students, even if they have a disability, if they're in a two, if they're in a dual-language program, they outperform students with the same disabilities, or had, or themselves, had they not participated in it, in a program, based on what language does for our brains. Or, some other misconceptions are that a second language will delay gains in the first language, or that students with disabilities do not have the ability to acquire a second language without sacrificing cognitive delays. So these are common misconceptions that we now know are not accurate. And now, my friends at the BBC are going to share a little video with you, and this is where we're going to build, we're going to take about five minutes to build a little background about the bilingual brain.
hold people back, especially children. Turns out, we couldn't have been more wrong. Learning new languages is an exercise of the mind. It's the magic of learning, of achieving merit. In the bilingual brain, all our languages are active, all at the same time. The continual effort of suppressing a language while speaking another, along with a negative language that comes with regularly switching between languages, exercises our brain. It improves our concentration, problem-solving, memory, and in turn, our creativity. It's not widely accepted, but there are huge benefits to being bilingual. A key breakthrough came back in 2007 in Toronto, when Ellen Bialystok and her team made a discovery that shook the scientific community and has massive real-world implications.
It was the first study which suggested that bilingual people, people who speak more than one language, develop dementia four to four-and-a-half years later than those who don't. It was a powerful confirmation of the idea of cognitive reserve.
Now, what is cognitive reserve? Cognitive reserve is the idea that people develop a reserve of thinking abilities, and this protects them against losses that can occur through aging and disease. As well as delaying the onset of dementia, bilingual people have been shown to recover significantly better after a stroke. Learning anything helps develop cognitive reserve, because something special about language.
Language is particularly broad and complex. It affects ideas and certain senses. More complex a certain skill is, the more likely it is to have positive effect on cognitive reserve.
So when is the best time to learn a new language? Well, here's part of the answer.
The brain is a complex set of new networks. When you're learning a new language as a child, you're building new networks. But when you learn a language later in life, you have to modify the existing networks and make more connections. Because learning languages later in life can be challenging, the benefits can also be greater.
But a 2023 study, great comment, suggests it's just part of the story. So we invited three groups of children, that were eight to eight to 10, and we had a group of children who were bilinguals, a group of children who had early exposure to Greek and English from birth, they were our early bilinguals, and finally, we had a group who had been exposed to English between the ages of two and five, and they were our later bilinguals. So what we did, the one I've done before, is that we asked the children to line the scanner while doing nothing and just staring at a cross, and during this, we measured brain activity. So what we found out, really exciting for us, is that our early bilingual group had the strongest connectivity in the network at rest. These group of regions are, regions that are lighter, when we're doing nothing and just mind-wandering. Something like you're going to the gym every day, your muscles might be bigger at rest, but similarly, your brain might be better connected at rest, because you're learning your language. And this is something that I've found before. And there's more. One of the most known behavioral effects of bilingualism in children and adults is the ability to see the other people's perspective, or to understand that it is possible to have different points of view.
Recent studies have also found that people tend to react more emotionally in their first language, and more rationally, in a more abstract way, in the second. And the way this is usually explained is that the first language is the one which we use to speak with family, with friends, in informal settings. The second language is usually learned at school, at the university, at work.
that we use in our dual-language classrooms, which is turn and talk. So I'm going to give you one minute to turn and talk to your neighbors, and share briefly
Scientists are discovering new websites to be bilingual all the time, and it's not
with your neighbor, a one to two-minute, what resonated with you about the video, maybe
just our brains that benefit.
what was something that you learned that was new, or what, maybe what is one misconception
Learning new languages and speaking more than one language is very important, not
that I presented that now, watching the video, that dispelled one of the misconceptions
only for individuals, but also for societies.
Learning new languages can open doors to new cultural experiences, life opportunities,
in the earlier slides. So, I'm going to give you a minute to turn and talk with someone that is nearby, and then I will bring you back.
What'd you find fascinating?
So specifically, I think it was interesting in general with what we've covered so far.
So far.
different people, different communities, and different ways of seeing the world.
So what's interesting to me is, they said that, as an adult, it actually has a greater benefit in some ways, and I didn't know that. I've always been told that it's just that it's better for the younger ages.
Well, you learn better, you know the language better, you have a better accent from younger.
Right.
And with that, we'll say goodbye now.
That's very true. But older, they're learning too late. First, they said they were replacing your, and then later, they said they could even be beneficial.
Bye.
To be over at the end, they say, "A program requires additional"
Bye.
They do, and we do, in the district.
Yeah, because your brain's
Yeah, that resonated with me, too, that, uh, the brain, they'll think they sense that.
My kids came from, we came to the district, and we took them, and we paid to, I bet they're not supposed to.
I wonder how it would have been.
I don't know. It's a good one.
The benefits are
Okay, I'm going to give you five seconds and invite you back.
I'm surprised he got in, and he was writing for the, 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 for the,
And they spoke only Spanish, or they spoke only Russian or Ukrainian. So they didn't have any command or exposure to English until they came here. That is no longer who our students are. The majority of the students who we serve now are students who are coming from households that are bilingual, that actually speak two languages. They're second or third generation, but the home language is the family still maintains that language. So one of the misconceptions that we like to dispel with teachers who have in our staff who have been here for many years is often there's there's a misconception of kids not having enough. This child doesn't have enough of that Spanish home language, or this child doesn't have enough of that Russian or Ukrainian home language because they're exposed to both. There isn't such a thing as enough, right? Kids develop and we support them in developing those languages. And actually, kids who have command of both languages are wonderful for dual-language program because they really are the glue in those programs between your kids, especially in two-way, who are English only, and the very few kids who we have now who are Spanish only, right? They're that glue connecting those classrooms. But that is another myth that we continue to dispel as our population of our students have changed from our newcomers, kids that may have just been new to the country, to the kids that have been here in our third generation, but really speak both languages and come to school with both those languages. So we continue to dispel those myths with our educators as well, who are familiar with who our kids used to be. So with that, we're going to delve a little deeper into the types of bilingual because, you know, videos and the way that we learn is another great way to really learn about the benefits of being bilingual and the types of bilingual brains.
Hablas español? ¿Habla francés? ¿Usted habla español? If you answered sí, sí, o sí, o sí, and you're watching this in English, chances are you belong to the world's bilingual and multilingual majority. And besides having an easier time traveling or watching movies without subtitles, knowing two or more languages is that your brain may actually look and work differently than those of your bilingual friends. So what does it really mean to know a language? Language ability is typically measured in two active parts: speaking and writing, and two passive parts: listening and reading. While a balanced bilingual has their equal abilities across the board in two languages, most bilinguals around the world know and use their languages in varying proportions. And depending on the situation and how they acquire each language, they can be classified into three general types. For example, let's take Gabriela, whose family integrates to the US from Peru when she's two years old. As a compound of bilingual, Gabriela develops two linguistic codes simultaneously with a single set of concepts, learning both English and Spanish as she begins to process the world around her. Her teenage brother on the other hand might be a court-nit bilingual, working with two sets of concepts, learning English in school while continuing to speak Spanish at home and with friends. Finally, Gabriela's parents are likely to be subordinate bilinguals, who learn a secondary language by filtering it through their primary language. Because all types of bilingual people can become fully proficient in a language regardless of accent or pronunciation, the difference may not be apparent to a casual observer. But recent advances in brain imaging technology have given neurologists a glimpse into how specific aspects of language learning affect the bilingual brain. It's well-known that the brain's left hemisphere is more dominant in analytical and logical processes, while the right hemisphere is more active in emotional and social ones. Though this is a matter of degree, not an absolute split. The fact that language involves both types of functions while lateralization develops gradually with age has led to the critical period hypothesis. According to this theory, children learn languages more easily because the plasticity of their developing brain lets them use both hemispheres in language acquisition, while in most adults, languages lateralize to one hemisphere, usually the left. If this is true, learning a language in childhood may give you a more holistic grasp of its social and emotional context. Conversely, recent research showed that people who learn a second language in adulthood exhibit less emotional bias and a more rational approach when confronting problems in a second language than in their native one. But regardless of when you acquire additional languages, being multilingual gives your brain some remarkable advantages. Some of these are even visible, such as higher density of the gray matter that contains most of your brain's neurons and synapses, and more activity in certain regions when engaging in a second language. The heightened workout of bilingual brain we see throughout our life can also delay the onset of diseases like Alzheimer's and dementia by as much as five years. The idea of major cognitive benefits to bilingualism may seem intuitive now, but it would have surprised earlier experts. Before the 1960s, bilingualism was considered a handicap that slowed a child's development by forcing them to spend too much energy distinguishing between languages, a view based largely on flawed studies. And while a more recent study did show reaction times increased for some bilingual students in cross-language tests, it also showed that effort and attention needed to switch between languages triggered more activity and potentially strengthened the dorsolateral prefrontal cortex. This is the part of the brain that plays a large role in executive function, problem-solving, switching between tasks, and focusing while filtering out irrelevant information. So while bilingualism may not necessarily make you smarter, it does make your brain more healthy, complex, and actively engaged. And even if you didn't have the good fortune of learning a second language as a child, it's never too late to do yourself a favor and make the linguistic leap from hello to hola, bonjour, or niha. Because when it comes to our brains, a little exercise can go a long way.
So who are the students in our dual-language programs? I know you were really wanting a turn to talk at that time, so I apologize for not building it in there. Who are the kids in our dual-language programs? And again, earlier I shared with you that the demographics of who our kids are now has changed over time. And a lot of that, I really think, is based on our families' understanding the importance of second language acquisition and really supporting that language at home. I know even in attending and going to Three Rivers Elementary where our Russian bilingual program is, when I was Principal Frost, oh my gosh, fifteen, dare I say, twenty years ago, and some of the families and the students who are there are now children of the children who I had in the program. And the reason that they're there is because those families understand the importance of the language and wanting the kids that they have raised their own children with that home language in the home, even though they may be second or third generation here, again. So our children continue to change and the demographics of who we're serving continue to change as our families understand and value that second home language. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about skill transfer and cross-linguistic transfer in our program with about, and this really refers to the work that our teachers do in our classroom as they're guiding instruction and planning. Cross-linguistic transfer is critical in the instructional design and academic implementation in a dual-language program. Cross-linguistic transfer means that once you learn something in one language, students transfer that skill to the other language. So for example, if a student was learning about linear equations in Russian and there was that time where they were in the L1, right? The teacher wouldn't need to reteach linear equations in English, okay? What the teacher might do is really just call out the academic vocabulary for linear equations and the kids would transfer that knowledge, the mathematical knowledge, from one language to the other. So the concept and understanding transfers to both languages. So what you will learn in one language, you don't need to learn in the other, okay? Because your brain, it's the same person, you understand all those things. This is referred to as Scarborough's Rope, and it represents the various components needed in designing instruction for students when acquiring a second language. And Scarborough's Rope is really specific to literacy development when we're teaching in a dual setting and we're teaching literacy in more than one language. And this is specifically to Spanish and English. The details that differentiate instructions for students acquiring a second language are the oral language and linguistic scaffolds needed to support students in their literacy journey. In addition, metalinguistic awareness, second language acquisition, and linguistic scaffolds are necessary to make connections for students. And again, this helps them make those different connections. So we can't rely in a dual-language classrooms on phonics alone. All those language supports have to also be in place. And this is part of the support and the training that we provide to our dual-language teachers, helping them in designing instruction. In addition to that, this is a reading progression by language. And this, again, this is a Spanish-English example. And this is a reading progression for students in the dual-language program. And for example, if you look at the third box in each of the progressions, you will notice the top English box contains single-word reading or sight-word recognition. And on the bottom, it refers to syllable reading in Spanish. This is because in Spanish, students learn to read by syllables in contrast to the rules that they learn when reading in English. In the early 2000s, which again, they reference in some of the videos, there was a belief that different languages were stored in different parts of the brain and that the brain pulled information from different parts depending on the language a person was using. So kind of like the gear shifts in a car. You guys are really young, you probably don't know what that is. They don't make those anymore, but they used to have cars where you had to shift gears, right? So there used to be this belief that kids had to like, you know, pause and really think about when they were shifting or listening to different languages and going between both of those. During this time, in most programs, students were required to communicate in only one language or the target language during different instructional periods throughout the day. And we were no different when we launched our dual-language program. Phrases such as "It's Spanish or English time, so I'll only accept answers in that target language" were commonplace in our classrooms. Now, we really understand that this understanding was flawed and it is not reflected on how our brain stores language. Really, we have one language system and we really need to allow students when they're... So the teacher, what we also teach in our dual-language programs is teachers want to stay in the target language. So if we're instructing currently in English, the teacher wants to stay in that target language because the teacher understands that students need academic vocabulary, for example, in mathematics or science in English. However, when students are responding, we allow students to pull from their one linguistic repertoire, which contains Spanish and English or Spanish and Russian, to respond because it's not about the language, it's about the content, understanding the content. So it may be a math lesson and the teacher says, here's the problem. The teacher may be teaching in English, but students may respond in Spanish, English, or Russian. With the correct response, the teacher would respond to them in English and then move on. Now, we know that using their entire linguistic repertoire, the green brain, students are able to learn and demonstrate what they know and make meaning in the different contact areas and social interactions. When we limit the language students are able to use, we're assessing their ability to use a certain language rather than their ability to use language to demonstrate knowledge and develop complex and deep understandings. For this reason, students should have access to their entire language repertoire when communicating and working in academic settings. And again, I share this with you because it is a change in how we... And really around the research when dual-language first emerged, this is a change in our understanding. And again, we didn't do brain scans twenty years ago like we have the ability of what we're doing now to really understand the impact of language on the brain. Cognitive and conceptual transfer. Cognitive and conceptual transfer occurs throughout the day in a dual-language classroom. It is the transfer of academic information across languages. Once the concept is learned, only the language of expression changes. In dual-language settings, concepts are not taught multiple times in both target languages. But rather, they are taught once and supported with cross-linguistic transfer and building of academic vocabulary in both languages, which is referred to as bridging. Making students aware of their language and thinking about connections between languages is called metalinguistic awareness. Helping students make connections and noticing the differences in things such as grammar and vocabulary is done through bridging. When a student in kindergarten classroom learns, for example, that the exclamation point is used as punctuation to demonstrate emotion, the teacher may model a writing piece while vocalizing excitement or emotion in their voice and modeling the use of the exclamation point, while writing and narrating a sentence that he or she writes it on a chart paper during writing. So for example, I'm a kindergarten teacher and I have all my kids sitting in front of me and I'm writing and I say, okay, kids, I write a sentence. And let's say I'm writing in Spanish and I say, la maestra le gusta helado. The teacher loves ice cream, exclamation point. And what I'm going to do there with students, I'm going to write it in Spanish in front of the kids. And then I'm going to put my punctuation in Spanish, which would be an upside-down exclamation point at the beginning and then an exclamation point in the end. So what bridging would be, instead of teaching, kids now learn this and I say, oh, niños, kids, yo uso esta puntuación, I use this punctuation to demonstrate emotion, excitement, or if someone's yelling. So I would teach the kids that and then I would say, and they would be like, okay. And I would model that for students in front of them. And a bridging moment would be, instead of reteaching the whole sentence again, I would say, but when we write this in English, I only use the exclamation point at the end. That's a bridge moment, right? I only have to teach the concept at the exclamation point once, but I explain to students how we use it differently if I'm engaging in English versus if I'm engaging in Spanish. So that is what a bridge moment is, is really calling out to students the differences of when we use different rules in which academic language. So this chart demonstrates the language allocations in our grades K through five. And one of the things you'll notice on here is it'll say Spanish or Russian instruction and then it gives you Spanish or Russian language arts, mathematics, science, or social studies. And then on the other side, you see English instruction. One of the things that we share with teachers, again, this would be the target language. So in kindergarten, you're going to see that science and social studies are the target languages in Spanish or in Russian instruction. So when the teacher's teaching and modeling, they're in that target language. However, I am constantly making cross-linguistic connections or bridging to academic vocabulary in those contents in the partner language, which would be English, okay? And I'm also accepting for students to make those cross-linguistic connections, whether it's my English home language students or my Spanish home language students or my Russian, Ukrainian home language students, to be able to engage with all that content in either language and I would accept those answers from them in either. And again, these are the language allocations in grades six through eight. And while the language allocations, again, in both these charts indicate Spanish, English, or Russian, it is understood that there are cross-linguistic connections being made in either language throughout the day and throughout instruction. So when the target language is Spanish or Russian, there are cross-linguistic connections being made to English through bridging opportunities and moments. Now, we're going to delve a little into training and professional development. So this chart demonstrates the key concepts and instructional structures that are a focus for training and development for our dual-language teachers. Supporting teachers with bridging in various contents and when and how to make cross-linguistic connections as well as what to teach in English or Spanish or Russian during literacy with an emphasis in transferable skills and non-transferable skills has been a focus and will continue to be a focus for our professional development. And this is an example of one of our, this is grade one, unit one, using the ARC materials. And this became available just this year with American Reading Company. There, another common misconception among staff and among, I would say, even just nationally in implementation of dual languages. We've been really fortunate, OSPI has asked us to host dual-language visits from around the state and we've, I think the last time we had maybe twenty-some, I did put it in a Friday update, districts come and visit us to learn from us that are interested in implementing dual-language models or refining their practice. And a common misconception held by many is that there is a dual-language curriculum. So there is no dual-language curriculum that exists in the United States or in the world. It does not exist. And so often, what ends up happening is we, and again, in Pasco, we have been really instrumental in selecting materials that are available in both languages because we have such a large dual-language program and it is important to our community. But simply providing materials in two languages is not enough for teachers. It creates a very high cognitive lift for them to have to differentiate between both of those of what they're teaching in one language and what they're teaching in another. So we have really been working with American Reading Company, who I would say has the most developed dual-language framework of any company in the United States. And this is hot off the press and we've done this training with our teachers this year, is it really provides teachers, and ELD is really English language development. And again, it's that, those bridging opportunities of looking at what, and being specific and supporting teachers with what they're teaching in Spanish, what they're teaching in English, what are the skills that transition and transfer from one language to the other and which ones need to be explicitly taught so that they're not having to delve through all the English materials, all the Spanish materials, and figure it out. So we know that that has been a challenge and that is the work that we are working on this year.
So which, what is this? What program is this?
This is American Reading Company, this is ARC.
And this is ARC, okay.
Is that only available in Spanish? Is that... or the other languages like Russian also?
It is only available in Spanish. What we do for our Russian dual-language programs is, of course, we purchase all of the English materials and then they create paired literacy with their Russian materials to kind of mirror what they have in English because it does not exist. What I can tell you is our program has grown from the inception, maybe twenty years ago, when we maybe had one classroom and it was Mrs. Polyukh with a K through three combination classroom. And now we have, I think, I think last year we had two kindergarten classrooms because our program has grown so much. So what has been a challenge for us, and I think the positive things is that we've had our Russian bilingual program for so long that our teachers have really acquired a lot of literature over the years of books that the district has purchased. What has become challenging is with the conflict between Russia and Ukraine, those materials are harder to get a hold of and available to continue to update our classroom libraries and things when books get lost or used and things like that. So we do work with different publishing companies out of New York and on the East Coast to bring in materials for our Russian bilingual program for that reason.
So how much extra time does it take the teacher to try to pull the dual-language curriculum together since it's not available? Has it been really stressful or how is the teacher's response?
So I would say that it is a heavier lift for our dual-language teachers because they are having to work with materials in multiple languages and understand that. But in response to that, and that is one of the reasons that we've worked so closely with American Reading Company, is that these things have been developed upon our request and with us. And often, even with some of the other publishers, what they've done is we work agreements with them. For example, some social studies and other contents where we say, they give us, they say, okay, we will allow you to translate because we have translators within our own district. We translate their materials, we release the rights because it's their materials they own and they allow us to translate so that our teachers no longer have to translate materials for them. So those are things that we do and we work out with publishing companies to make materials available and accessible for our teachers. So with that question, also, these are some of the things that we've done. And this is new this year in response to what we've heard from our teachers of saying, gosh, you know, I'm managing ARC is, you know, it is challenging to implement as new teachers and we're in our fourth year of implementation. And so what our dual-language teachers have asked is said, can you, as the district, right, kind of create a map for us of what we're teaching in English and Spanish so we're not having to figure it out? The great thing about that is, yes, one, we want to remove that cognitive load from them and on the planning load on them, but we also want to assure curriculum equity in what students are receiving and assuring that kids are getting all those transferable skills and not transferable skills taught. So, and I did not pay you to ask that question. So this year, yeah, this is, this is, this is actually new. This year, in direct response to Dr. Norberg, what you're saying, what we have done with American Reading Company is, because what we don't do is we don't teach everything in Spanish and then teach it again in English or everything in Russian and then everything again. There's no time to do that. So you have your standards and you select which ones you're choosing and where you're bridging between those concepts. So what we've done this year, and this is work that we have done with the consultants in collaborating efforts with the publishers, is what we've developed, we've taken every ARC unit and delineated for our teachers this year. The green is Spanish or Russian target language and then the blue is English. So we are very explicit about what portions, because again, the lesson's already completed for people in the ARC materials. But we've gone through and said, this is what you're teaching in Spanish, this is what you're teaching in English, and here's where you're bridging. And then we're working with our teachers to develop those bridging moments and times throughout the lessons so that we don't leave things to chance. Now, we've had, I think, every grade level has had at least one training with American Reading Company this year. I think we just finished our second and then we will have one more this year. And then we will bring them back next year to do further work with our teachers, okay? Just specifically.
How much is costing, that was agreement that you have, is there any cost to that?
So with American Reading Company, we have a consultant that works with us from ARC and we pay her out-of-state bilingual funds that can only be used for these purposes. So if we didn't use them for these purposes, we would be giving the money back to the state. So it isn't basic education dollars, it's bilingual program funds specifically designed to fund this type of work. Yeah. So this is in response to what our teachers have asked us for and it's very explicit instruction around the target languages, what we're teaching in each language, and it's work that we're doing at a district level so that our teachers don't have to figure it out as they go in trying to manage two different programs that are offered to them in both languages.
So are there any other questions? I'm nearing the end of my presentation.
So it's kind of like two hurdles, the teachers have to go both ARC as well as the dual-language, some of the teachers.
Well, and that's what this is, that's why this is so important. And so this is the actual ARC unit here, it's like the lesson plan for the teachers of what they're teaching. So what we've done is gone through based on the different skills and concepts and foundational skills and it's exactly what's in ARC, but we've outlined what they're teaching in what language.
So it's allowing them just to take this ARC and go with it, right?
Correct.
This is phenomenal. This is phenomenal. And we're doing a great service for ARC, but they are also doing a service for us. But I love that we are developing this, making it easier for our bilingual teachers. And the better our bilingual program gets, the more likely we are going to have more and more kids enter it. And I think, and as our parents understand that progress in the beginning looks slower because they don't score quite as well on tests and yet by the end, they score higher than their cohorts, I think is so important. And I still have this dream that we can have, you know, the majority of our kids graduate bilingual.
Absolutely.
Beautiful.
And our students do take the, the stamp assessment is kind of like their cumulative project for the seal of biliteracy that all our students in dual language take before they, again, on their route to, before they graduate for that seal of biliteracy. And one of the wonderful things, even, you know, as we come full circle, we honor, because what that is, the stamp assessment is the same assessment that we give our employees when they apply for bilingual position. It's the same assessment that our teachers take. So we honor, we have students that have come from our dual-language program that teach for us and we honor that seal of biliteracy because it's the same assessment that they take and then they get to bypass the system and that's really great. And we've done that in several instances where we've hired our own Pasco kids to work in the dual-language program for us.
So real quick, I just wanted to recap. So this ARC core breakdown for teachers, is that available only in Spanish or is that also done for all the other languages, Ukrainian, Russian?
It's only available in Spanish. And this is actually new work this year. So, you know, some of the challenges from a very large system of ours is making sure, again, we have training during the day, we try to limit that for teachers. We know they have busy lives after work so that they can attend the training. Sometimes what happens is getting the word out, right? So that if people are sick or they have something and they miss the training of how do you get the information? Because all of these things are intended and are there to support their workload and support them in the lesson planning. So, you know, we continually, and one of the wonderful things that our instructional coaches, our biliteracy coaches do is when we have teachers that miss the training, they follow up and say, hey, you know, we're sorry you couldn't make it, we're offering this again. It's optional, of course, for people to attend so that to bring you back up to speed after hours if they miss the training during the day. So we offer multiple opportunities because we know the importance that it is for people to understand the framework and also to make sure that all of our kids are accessing the same academic content and that we're not leaving things to chance, yeah. And this is one of the things, I would say, from all of the districts that visit Pasco and many of them have teams of teachers that attend, they say, this is the biggest thing. Every time we show them the work that we're doing, they're like, that's what you, that's, they tell their district, that's what you need to do for us. Because many are in the boat where teachers are having to figure it out and people are just giving materials. And that is why we are really doing this work for and then with our teachers so that we assure that it's there and available for them.
So could you go back through how large the dual-language program and the other language types that are here? Do you have any slides on that?
Yes, let me go back. I believe there was one in the very beginning. I believe there was one in the very beginning. There it is. So we have 4,613 students served in our dual language classrooms this school year.
So break that down off. Every elementary?
Every elementary has a dual language program and all of our middle schools have dual language programs in sixth grade. And then McLaughlin and Reynolds have dual language programs sixth through eight.
McLaughlin and Reynolds have dual language programs?
Yes.
Sixth through eight, but Ochoa and Stevens do not?
No, because they were in place prior to the expansion of dual language. That's why they only have it in sixth grade when the board made the decision to expand and transition from a late exit bilingual model. So that group of kids, when that decision was made eight years ago, are now in sixth grade. But Reynolds and McLaughlin are serving our kids that came from the longstanding programs at McClintock and Maya Angelou.
Okay.
And the plan in the future is stay static at this level?
Well, those sixth graders would roll into seventh grade and then eighth grade.
And then high school would no longer?
In high school, it looks different in high school because kids have a lot of voice and choice in high school. So what we would offer in high school is different content classes and electives in Spanish and kids would have the choice at that point of what they wanted to take. But the model does change in high school because it's really selective. But we would, because we have many more students than what we have now, we would be able to offer much more than we are offering now at the high school level.
And we are going to offer more at the high school level?
Yes, yes.
And eventually all the middle schools will be sixth through eight? Is that?
Correct.
I was gonna say, I'm really a great work leader. I was, I was doing this, it's a two age program from kindergarten up until eighth grade at Maya Angelou. So I remember thinking, because I came here to the board when I was in fourth grade, third grade, and I presented to the board about like why is language at some point in our district, and I've seen this, how much we've grown as a dual language program down to Pasco leadership. It's like Pasco's doing all the right things and all the right places. The teachers in dual language themselves, they did a great job of like implementing all these things. I'm sitting here like looking at all these presentations, I'm like, kind of like receiving the training program, I'm a dual language teacher too, because all this is really important. So yeah, I'm just like so grateful to see how much this has grown and I'm like really excited to see how dual language is being played up, not just in Pasco, but like Washington State and like maybe even in high school. I'm really grateful for all this happening.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions before I get to our final video in our closing, which is the most important one? Yeah?
For the ARC program, so I saw that the ARC program was being used for like third through five.
It's K through five.
K through five. Is there plans for ARC to like go into the middle school as well?
Yeah, we actually have a different curriculum in middle school and that does look different. It is, every other unit is available in Spanish and English. So it isn't the same as ARC, but it is available in Spanish and English. So the model is slightly different at middle school. But given that, by the time kids get to third grade, it's fifty fifty so that one language isn't dominating the other. The literacy instruction is fifty fifty in either Russian and English or Spanish and English. So by the time really kids get to third grade, they're bilingual and biliterate. So by the, and again, and that's why it's so important as you go to middle school and high school to give kids more options because they're pretty much fluent in both languages.
So what is the percentage? What percentage of elementary students right now are in our dual language program? Do you know?
I couldn't give you, I could get that for you, I just don't have it right now.
Okay. Is there, I know we have a little over a thousand kids per grade level. I was just trying to do the math in my head, so.
About fifty percent.
Okay, any other?
I had a question. I see that the model goes from eighty, eighty, twenty to fifty fifty all through elementary school, but I was wondering if there's any way that like bilingual teaching, like is there an end to bilingual teaching? Because I'm a kid of the system, like I went through this, right? And from what I remember is that once I reached middle school, it wasn't bilingual teaching anymore and then obviously in high school, I don't receive bilingual teaching. So is there like an end to the bilingual teaching? Like, yeah, that's my question.
So, yes. Now, would a lot of students access in high school prior, again, that large cohort is now in sixth grade? When that cohort reaches ninth grade, we'll be able to offer a lot more at the high school level. And it'll, again, you'll have a content class in Spanish, like you may have a CTE class in Spanish or in Russian, right? It just depends. So kids will have to choose and then we will have to create what's available based on student interest because it really will be up to student choice. What students used to access who went to primarily Pasco High because how our programs prior to the addition of the new high school, what we did is our newcomers who were Spanish speakers went to Pasco High. If they were speakers of any of the other forty-eight languages spoken or forty-seven languages, they would go to Chihuahua. So our dual language students who attended Pasco High could attend the L1 classes, but those classes were mainly designed for newcomer students. But dual language kids that came, that wanted a content class of Spanish could access and that's how they access those classes. So that will change as the program goes into high school, just based on the amount of students wanting to access additional classes and maintain their language fluency.
That's really interesting and really cool.
Are there any other questions?
Is there any research on cohesiveness of people, dual language versus single language? In other words, how society reacts to dual language versus single language?
So the.
Within a specific country.
So within the world, our whole entire globe of the earth, the majority of people on this planet speak more than one language. I would say, you know, again, I don't know that I could answer that. What I can say is with education and knowledge, and that is why, you know, one of the reasons I presented the information and building the background of how the brain works, and again, misconceptions, is until people understand what research actually says, now that we have like brain imaging, brain scans, to really understand what language does for the brain, and that is the important part of educating, you know, our families and communities. When I began in Pasco twenty-five years ago, twenty-four years ago, a long time ago, many of our, even our, at that time it was a late exit bilingual program, many of our families did not want their kids in the program. They wanted them in English only because of different societal factors, which you are indicating. They didn't want their kids ostracized. They didn't want their kids labeled as immigrants or newcomers. What we know now is that bilingualism is good for everyone. And like I said, because people are more educated, they understand what brain research says. When you look at the amount, we have had the largest, I think, over three hundred kindergarten families from English speaking households on the kinder interest to get into the dual language because people now understand the value of dual language and the value that that has on their children. So this isn't coming from our Spanish speaking community and it's not necessarily coming from our Russian speaking community, it's coming from our English community because they value and they understand the value of two languages, of all of what this research is indicating.
No, it's really cool. We were in line at that new Crispy Cone, waiting to get an ice from Cone. And my little granddaughter was there and her mother speaks Spanish to her, father speaks Spanish to her, my son. My husband only spoke Spanish to our children, but they responded in English because I was the main caregiver and I spoke English. So I was the weak link here. When I got into this school district, we hadn't been in a whole long and I was a little bit late getting my youngest son, but I tried to get my other children into the dual language program. They wouldn't take them because they had to start in kindergarten. I wished we were a little more flexible because I really think they would have caught up. They were highly capable and I really think they would have caught up. But needless to say, they weren't flexible. We weren't able to get them in that. And all of my children who have graduated from high school, most of my children are now fluent in both languages and can speak it as they have gone to two countries where they really had to speak it and they learned to do that, which is why I have this friend, this little, very, very blonde granddaughter who is fluent in Spanish. She speaks, she speaks both, but mostly Spanish because both her father and her mother speak Spanish to her. What was really interesting was behind them, we were in this line for an hour, by the way. And behind them was a couple that were Hispanic and they said, "That is incredible. We wished our parents would have done that with us." But they really encouraged us to speak English because of the way society looked at us when we spoke Spanish, which I was heartbroken. But they're like, "But we are going to do it differently. We know both English and Spanish." We are, they had no children yet. We want to teach our children English. And so it's exactly what you said, as it has become more normal, as it has become more acceptable. And it has been, which unfortunately, in the community that doesn't speak English, it's been more acceptable that we know the benefits of speaking Spanish. This was a dream. When I got on the board, I was so, because I wanted my son in it, he didn't get to do it. I really wanted my children to be in this program and they didn't get this opportunity. I wanted every single person who wanted to graduate from this high school bilingual that they could and we are well on our way there. And no, I think we are there. And it was a pipe dream and watching you and your work and all that you have done and the superintendent and her support of this, we are now looked to throughout the state and outside of the state for the work that is done here in this district. And it's incredible work and we are teaching our children not just another language, but we're teaching them to be more culturally sensitive. We're teaching them to have greater perspectives like we've seen and we're improving their health throughout their lifetime. That is an incredible thing. So this was an incredible presentation and kudos to you and your work here for all that you have done. I think this is one of the greatest things that our district has done throughout the history of Pasco School District. So congratulations.
I was like, "That was a great closing." And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Lovos. These have been two very, very research heavy and just a lot of, so much depth of knowledge on your part from your MTSS presentation to this presentation on dual language. And I'm always very impressed when you're in front of us with not only your knowledge but your presentation skills and your ability to deliver such an engaging study session. So I know that a lot of work goes into these and so for myself on behalf of the board, thank you so much for preparing something that was, and for recognizing our multiple learning styles of not just reading and listening, but videos and having so much information about our dual language programs and all of the data behind it. So this was very thorough and very well done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was my pleasure.
We will recess from our study session and we invite you to join us for our regular board meeting, which this evening begins like always at six.